Okay. Okay, so she said that her fiance worked with the Jim Zosh at Senna Mahoney.
Someone else is trying to come in. Oh, looks like over that's coming.
Oh, good. There we go.
Her fiance worked with the Jim Zosh at Senna Mahoney. And they think that it's your cousin and that they love the corn. Zosh is, I think she just said, does that sound about right?
I think it's my uncle's brother.
Oh, okay, got it.
Can you give us Sharon and then I'll give you this one, the microphone?
Sure.
Just pass it on.
Sure.
Thanks for it.
Okay. We're good. Okay. One, two, three, four, five.
We want to see where you're up here. There's lots of people talking on Zoom, so.
What's that? Oh. I don't use those. We have five now?
Yeah.
So we're good to go.
It should be.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to call this June 5th meeting of the Patent Township Planning Commission to order. Do we have anything to add to the posted agenda? Hearing none, I'll move to approve the minutes from our last planning commission meeting. So move. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the minutes from our last planning commission meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it. We will now move to item three, which is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that has comments that, about something that they would like to discuss? If there's anything specific that is on tonight's meeting agenda, please wait until we get to those items to make your comments. Okay, hearing no public comments from either in person or Zoom. We will now move to the fourth item, which is the Benner Township zoning ordinance update. And this is just an opportunity for us to give any comments that we would like to on this.
Yes, so attached in your agenda packet is a letter from Benner Township requesting any input that you have on some zoning ordinance amendments that they are reviewing. Public hearing is this evening, so the timeframe was sort of stacked with our meeting tonight. So staff did review it and did not see any need to comment. Most of the changes are, they're just sort of clarifying language or just cleaning up some things. You did already review these amendments to similar ordinance changes back in March of 2019, May of 2020, and July of 2021. So staff did submit a letter to the Benner Township supervisors for consideration for their public meeting this evening, basically stating that we had no comment. But if, and that letter is attached in your packet, but if there's anything that you would like to further clarify, or if you did want to send on any sort of comment after the fact, we can do that.
Just out of curiosity, did they pass it on the 5th?
Today's the 5th, so it's tonight at 7:00 PM. So we can keep you posted, but, yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments on anything?
I was just going to ask, from your perspective, was there any, I mean, I read it and it didn't seem controversial to me at all, except for maybe, I don't know, did you see anything controversial?
We didn't really see anything. It's truly just a courtesy. I'm, you know, I'm kind of glad that they sent it to you guys, just because you share a boundary, but there wasn't anything substantial. I would say that.
It sort of looked that way to me, too.
Yeah, the previous ones that you had looked at, I went back and reviewed those, and it does look like there were comments sent with some of those, but this is really just more clarification type information, and so. But again, if there's anything that you want to send along, we can.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to make any comments on anything? Anyone else in person?
Nope.
Okay, I have no comments, so we don't need to vote, so we can go to five, which is Planning Commission 101, and I'm not teaching it, so.
All right, give me just a second, let me share my screen. So I put together a really brief PowerPoint for you for this evening. Thank you. There we go. Can everybody on Zoom see that?
Yeah.
Okay. For whatever reason, it's not showing up as a slideshow on mine, but it's showing up on the board here, so I just want to make sure you guys on Zoom can see it, too. So usually when new planning commission members come along, in January is when we would try to do such a thing, but there was, there were just a lot of moving pieces and there were some new faces and personalities, myself included. So welcome to Brian and to Debbie, who joined us in January. And Ms. Amy Farkas, this is her first planning commission meeting with us here in Patent Township. And also because I'm relatively new, we thought it would be a really great opportunity, since this agenda was a little bit light, to just go through the very basics of planning, just to give you guys an overview. So I know that for the seasoned members, you may have some additional information to add. If you want to stop me and elaborate, by all means, you can help me teach this session. But truly just a 30,000-foot overview. If you are amendable, we'd like to throw some information like this in every agenda as time allows. It might just be in the form of a handout, or it might be another deep dive. There's a couple of things that we'd like to go into a little more detail with you on. So if there's any subjects that you would like more information, we can talk about this at the end. But as I'm going through this presentation, if you have questions or you want to add subject matter to this for a future presentation, just stop me and let me know. So to begin, we thought it would be fine. I'll wait till Sharon sits down. To begin, I thought it would be appropriate to start with sort of an inspirational type of scenario with lots of photos, because that's always fun. This is the definition from the American Planning Association. Planning is a dynamic discipline that works to improve the welfare of people and their communities by creating more convenient, equitable, helpful, efficient, and attractive places for present and future generations. Planning enables civic leaders, businesses, and citizens to play a meaningful role in creating communities that enrich people's lives. Good planning helps create communities that offer better choices for where and how people live. Planning helps communities to envision their future. It helps them find the right balance of new development and essential services, environmental protection, and innovative change. So to start, what does that even mean? And how in the world do we go about this? The legislative piece that allows us to plan in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is the municipality's planning code. You will hear us reference this as the MPC regularly. So in this document, there's a PDF online, and there's a link at the bottom of this PowerPoint that I can share with you. It defines all the rules for establishing and abolishing, for organizing, for appointing, for removing, planning agencies in general. And it talks about the powers and the duties that a planning agency has. It also defines the timelines, which is important, we need to stick with all of those timelines. But in it, it talks a lot about the tools for implementation. And the tools that are outlined in the MPC, there's quite a few, but here in Patent Township, there's three that we use on a regular basis. The comprehensive plan, which is the vision, that's sort of like the big picture type of roadmap for where we're going. And then the two implementation pieces are the subdivision and land development ordinance, which we refer to as the SALDO, and the zoning ordinance. So getting into the comp plan, this is the, this is sort of the big visionary type of thing. And in the center region, there are six municipalities that create the comprehensive plan. This is the guide for elected officials to reference when they're making decisions. A lot of the time, you're going to hear, is it consistent with the comp plan? That's a common question in planning. So the comp plan is reviewed every 10 years, and as of right now, we're going, we're using the 2013 Center Region Comp Plan. In this comprehensive plan, there were a variety of topics that were addressed, and in each of those topics were, was a lot of language and a lot of guidance for each. There's a link to the 2013 Comp Plan down below. But if you attended the Lucy Committee or the Center Regional Planning Commission meeting last Thursday night, Jim May released a draft of the schedule for the Center Region 2040, which is the comp plan that the Center Regional Planning Agency is updating right now. So this is in very early stages. It's going to have a very comprehensive public engagement, which is going to be rolled out hopefully this summer. And there's going to be a lot of information coming soon, so stay tuned for that. So again, big visionary document, this is what we, this is what we work off of. This plans out our, basically what our roadmap looks like for a couple of decades.
Does that mean that there's not a 2023 and a 2033 one coming out? Just, it's going straight to 2040?
2040, so the 2030, it was adopted in 2013, that's why it's called the 2013 Comp Plan, but the Center Region 2040 is looking out to the year 2040 as far, as far as a visionary.
When it's updated every 10 years, what does that mean? I mean, so is there a 10-year update happening?
So it's, so this is 2023, so this is the update. So the timeline's a little bit funky. So it was adopted in 2013, looking out 20 years to the future. The next one's going to be adopted in probably 2024.
Gotcha.
With 20 years out to the future, looking out to 2040, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So there's two pieces of implementation that come with the comp plan. So these are the, these are sort of the, the tools that you use to make, make the comp plan happen. So the subdivision and land development ordinance, this is the guidelines essentially for the development process, and it sets the design standards and any sort of public improvements that would be required to do development in Patent Township. Now, if relief is required by the owner for anything that happens in the SALDO, this is where a waiver comes in. And if you remember the last planning commission meeting, you had recommended approval of a waiver for Geisinger's parking. That was one of the, one of the pieces. So you guys are familiar with a waiver, but this is, it's specific to the SALDO. And there's a link to the SALDO here at the bottom of this PowerPoint, which I will send to you. Now, when you see plans come through, usually subdivision and land development are simultaneous, but occasionally they're separate, so I wanted to make sure you understood the difference between the two. A subdivision is a lot line adjustment, or you're creating parcels from a larger tract of land. And two great examples of that, back in, I think it was February, the Wertz subdivision came through, and it was two tracts of land, and they were trying to put a driveway all on one, all on one piece of property. That was, that was a very simple subdivision. Another example is when those larger tracts come through from a master plan perspective, and they're taking that huge piece of land and they're making it into smaller parcels for residential. That's, that's another example. Now for land development. This is a little more complicated, so the MPC goes into a lot of detail on what is defined as a land development plan. The most common one that you're going to see is when a non-residential building comes through. So Geisinger Phase III, that was a land development plan. And that required, that was then required to meet the conditions of the SALDO. So in the subdivision and land development ordinance, in the big ordinance book, that whole section is, there's a lot of information in there. But the major pieces, at the very beginning, it talks about the submission procedures, and that follows the dates that are outlined in the MPC. The plan requirements, now that is sort of what Alex and Nicole and I review to make sure that they're, they're meeting. That is the North Arrow, the size of the plan, just basically all of the things that are required, it's a very, very long checklist. It also includes the design standards and the improvement specifications. This is where you would find the requirements for parking. And then at the end of that, there's a section on the transportation impact report requirements. So that's where you would find all of those things. Moving on to zoning, so this is part two of that implementation piece. So zoning, again, it's the guidelines, and this stems completely around land use. And this is where the definitions for density, setback, building height, intention for zoning district, all of that stuff can be found. Now, unlike a waiver, a variance is what is required to provide relief from any requirements in the zoning, and that is a much more complicated process. It has strict criteria, and you need to provide a link to hardship, and it cannot be financial. So that is, that would go through the zoning hearing board, and it's a much, much more complicated process.
Check, click, and wait.
Do you want to add anything?
Check, click, and wait.
Yeah, I had to go through that.
Yeah.
Donate, yeah.
That was before my time, but that's a great example, yeah. So in the zoning ordinance, this section in the codebook is, this is also very complex. It outlines the general provisions, and this is where your zoning map language is found, and also where the definitions are found. So we talked with Toftrees, I think it was in January, about building height. This is where that definition would be. In, I think it was February or March, we had added a definition for multi-story, commercial style storage facility. That is where that would be. There's also sections on zoning districts. The supplemental regulations are found in the zoning ordinance. This is where your illumination standards are found, the lighting. There are standards for landscape requirements, loading areas, that type of thing. So this, this section sometimes gets lost in the shuffle. It's definitely worth looking at, just to see what all is included in there, because if any relief would be required for those types of things, that would have to go through the zoning hearing board with the variance. There's also a section on non-conforming uses, because that does happen, and then the section on the zoning hearing board. Now, the zoning districts. We would like to do a deeper dive into this in another session, so we can talk about what the intent of each zoning district really is, and talk about how the language that's in this section actually equates to on-the-ground, what's, what happens in real time. But for example, your residential, you have five zoning districts under residential. You have R1, R2, R3, MHP, which is manufactured home park, and RM, which is manufactured home residence. Under commercial, you have five different zoning districts, so you have C1, C2, OB, OBD2, and then commercial transitional, just as examples, so. But these are the major zoning districts that you have here in Patent Township. And again, like I said, we'd like to do a deeper dive into these at some point, but it's definitely worth taking a look. So from your perspective, you have SALDO and zoning. How in the world do you implement everything that's in there? And really, the most common way that you do that, sitting here at this table, is through the plan, plan review process. I'm going to skip over the sketch plan piece just for a second. You just saw that with Toftrees, we're going to talk about that in a minute. But essentially, a preliminary plan comes through the township, and if it is deemed to be complete, if all of the pieces are there, staff will review it and respond to the owner with comments. It goes through the zoning officer, engineer, and planner, so we, we take the major lift in that regard, to make sure that everything in that plan meets everything that Patent Township requires through the ordinances. It also goes to fire, refuse, and recycling, CADA, if applicable to the arborist, for additional comments. And it also requires a regional comment, and that, so I'm the planner for regional and for local, in your situation. But in some cases, certain plans are required to go to the county and CRPC as well. Once all of the ayes are dotted and t's are crossed, or at least we're really close to having all the ayes dotted and t's crossed, so that all of the elements of the plan meet the ordinances, that's when you guys come in, that's when it comes to you. And that gives you the opportunity to review and ask questions, make sure we didn't miss anything. If you approve it, or conditionally approve it, it goes on to the Board of Supervisors, and then they make the decision on whether they're going to approve it. Once the plan is completely final and everything is in place, then it gets signatures. Geisinger Master Plan is here for signatures this evening from you guys, is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, if you, if you have a lot more to go, people on Zoom aren't seeing the screen, they said.
Oh, that's not good.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyway, so once the signatures are on, then the final plan is recorded, and the owner takes that to the Recorder of Deeds office. I'm almost done.
One question.
Yeah.
Um, I guess, could I have to talk about?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Last time, last meeting we had, we were looking at, so for example, we were looking at a plan that wasn't really a plan yet, I think, I forget what it was called exactly, but it was about the new hotel.
Yep.
Sketch plan.
What's it called?
Sketch plan.
Sketch plan. So the questions, I guess, I guess I was wondering about, things seem to, seem, seem to already have been decided. I mean, things like the sidewalk versus the, and trees being cut down and a new entrance being put in that really does affect Toftrees Avenue and the traffic and all the issues there.
Right.
How does, how does that get that far along? I mean, I guess is my question.
Yeah, so I think my next slide actually was to talk about this. No, 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 we'll just, keep going. We are at sketch plan right here. Yep. Yeah, I've had, I apologize, I have trouble when I share my screen, it doesn't advance in the slideshow, it just freezes, and this has happened more than once, so I'm sorry. You guys can see it, but they can't see it.
Can you see it on Zoom now? Deb or Bill?
Plan review.
I can see it. Yes, I can see it.
Awesome, okay. Sorry about that, everybody. Okay. So the sketch plan, when, this is a very preliminary, and it's not, it's not mandatory. It's very, it's highly recommended by the township, but staff does not provide any comment, we don't really have any, any information prior. What happens is the owner would, would request to be on the township's planning commission and then the Board of Supervisors' agendas, and they want to share what they're going to be doing, so that they can have a dialogue with you guys before they submit a plan.
Yeah, they want to get feedback from the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. That doesn't necessarily mean that when they submit the plan, that's how everything's going to end up, because certainly it has to go through our staff review, and there's also other moving parts to that. But that's ideally what they'd like to see, but they want to get your feedback and take your pulse to see if that's something that the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors are interested in. For example, if they were proposing something that you guys were vehemently opposed to, they might then rethink that. They might go back and say, maybe it's not worth our battle on that issue, and we'll just try to pivot to something else.
But it does give you the opportunity, if you, if you have comment, it's completely non-binding, and I just want to stress that, but if you have comments, or you have just suggestions on where there's a sidewalk or some other improvement, if it's not a requirement, you can make the suggestion, you just can't require it to be. So that's, it's a really great opportunity to have that dialogue between both parties.
Well, in that particular case, well, I remember the sidewalk comment, was Doug said something like, we, we got them to put in a sidewalk. And then I was thinking, well, how did, how did we get them to do that if there wasn't a meeting about it or whatever?
Sorry, I can help explain that a little bit, Ellen. Back in 2019, we, we made an agreement with Navarro and Wright to do a Toftrees corridor plan. So this has been going on a long time. I think maybe Rich probably saw everything come through at some point, but everyone else was not on the planning commission. So we did a lot of public involvement back then for that, to get concurrence with that plan. So it's been a long process, and that's why it seems like, like it's coming out of nowhere, probably, because it's been going on for years. Sorry.
No, that's okay. We do, as much as we try, we do try to give you the history behind it, so that you know, especially if you haven't been sitting here for so long, especially me being new, I love to hear the backstory. So if there's something that we're missing, please just let us know, and we'll try and get more research, or at least do a better job next time. Thanks. Yes, he is not advancing again, I don't think. Yeah, so anyway.
I think we're seeing it on Zoom, but you're not seeing it up here.
Okay. So as far as actions from you, when you are reviewing a plan, there's really three major actions that you can take. So you can recommend approval, which is rare, it's usually conditional approval. If the plan was absolutely perfect, you could recommend approval to the board. But usually it's recommend conditional approval based on whatever outstanding comment letters are, are left, or if there's issues with the TIS or what have you. You can recommend denial of the plan, but when doing so, you need to have specific criteria that says why it's not meeting the ordinances, so that's very important. And if by chance there is an issue... And if by chance, there is an issue that you need further information or clarification or if we're waiting on something, you also have the ability to table the plan and ask more questions. So, if a plan is, if it meets all of the requirements in the ordinances, it's very, it's, I mean, it, it really should be approved. I know that there's occasionally times when maybe the architecture isn't something that's, that's, that you favor or that maybe the internal site layout or design or circulation isn't perfect. If there's nothing in the saldo or in the zoning or in any other ordinance for the township, there's not really any reason to, to deny the plan based on those things. So, just as an FYI, though, if no action is taken, there's no time extensions granted, there's no other dialogue that's occurred, that there's something in writing that says that there is, there's, you know, a time that's agreed upon by both parties. If no action is taken, it is automatically approved after 90 days regardless of what's included in that plan.
And I might just add on the denial of the plan process. If you deny a plan and you, you have to cite specific ordinances when you deny it, the developer then gets an opportunity to cure the deficiencies in the plan. So it's not like, I know when I was over on the other side of town in Harris Township, folks would say, we don't want a land development in this particular area and we need to stop it. So in New England, New England's a state where you can do that, they let the town board decide. Pennsylvania's a pro-land-use state, it's the way we've always been. So we don't have the opportunity to say no to something because we don't want it. You know, if it meets the ordinances, we have to allow it to happen. So I think that's an important distinction that sometimes people don't remember, especially the general public. They don't understand, they don't want additional traffic, they don't want whatever's coming with that development. So, we really, our hands get tied legislatively by the municipal planning code and by the state itself. They tell us sort of what we can and cannot do. And then also, and I think this came up maybe at your last meeting, remember that when you're voting on a plan, in Pennsylvania, you have to vote unless you have a conflict of interest and that's defined under the Ethics Act. So you can't not vote on a plan or abstain from a plan just because you don't like the plan or you're not, you know, you have some issue with the plan. You have to take some action on it. You can certainly, if you don't, you know, if you don't agree with something, you could certainly vote against it. But you can't abstain, that's, that's something that's prescribed under the Ethics Act.
Question on, if a plan is denied, you say the developers can come back.
Yes.
Does that reset the clock?
Yeah, there is within the MPC specific language that gives them a specific timeframe under which to cure the plan and then they have to file everything back with the township.
We've never let something go 90 days and not either taken action or gotten extension. So that doesn't happen. Nicole's on top of it.
Yeah, that's where your staff comes into play.
Yeah, the staff, the staff is here to help and do the heavy lift. So if you, if you ever have questions or need further clarification or something comes up on the agenda and you're just like, I really don't know, I mean, just, just reach out to us, email us, call us, do whatever it takes so we, we can help you, that's why we're here. So. This isn't forwarding. Anyway, so, okay, so back to this. So your major roles as the planning commission members, sitting here at this table. You are an advisory body to the Board of Supervisors. And it is, it, it would be really great if you were able to have dialogue with them. You already make appearances, you take turns making appearances at the board meetings, which is, which is a great start. But you're planning for the future of your municipality, so having open dialogue with the supervisors is huge. And you represent the best interests of the community as a whole. So just being engaged and really having a pulse on what, what the residents of Patent Township are, are hoping to see, what they, what they are looking for, the place that they want to live and work and be and, and all of those things. So, those are, those are the major pieces. So, as you're making decisions, just keep in mind if it really is in the best interests of the community. With that, I'm going to leave you with this graphic, which I always find quite amusing. But just to summarize, so the MPC, that's the rules. The comp plan is one of the tools, it's the vision. The saldo and the zoning, they are the implementation pieces. And the way that you get that to happen is making sure that whatever is in the saldo and the zoning is what you want to see happen here in your township.
One other question.
Sure.
If, if there's a conflict between, let's pretend, I don't, because we don't know what's in the affordable housing plan. If there's like a conflict in that plan with what this rest of the documentation says, what happens? Or like the climate action and adaptation plan. Like say they want less parking, paved parking, you know, or they're saying that this would be a better approach for the environment. And we say, oh, but the bill, if there's this much space, it has to have this many parking spots. Well, how, how does that get resolved?
Well, so in the case of like the climate action plan, that's an advisory plan that's going to come through the COG. So the Board of Supervisors could look at that and say, you know what, we agree, we want to have less parking globally across the township. So we're going to ask you guys to write an ordinance that says there's less parking that takes into climate, the climate goals in the region into consideration. Absent some kind of action from the Board of Supervisors, our local legislation, our local ordinances would govern how we review that plan and how you guys look at that plan. So, it, everything, and, and this is done, I think, because it makes it more fair, right, for the developers that come in. Because everything's in black and white as to what they follow. Nicole's job with the zoning is largely black and white, right? She looks at it, does it fit, does it not fit? Alex's job is largely black and white as well. She looks at the calculations, does it fit, does it work? That kind of thing, there's not a lot of gray area in planning for a reason and, and land development review for a reason, because then everybody's on a level playing field.
It's really helpful.
And if our hands are sort of like tied by Muni code, municipal code, how does, how does that piece get updated? Who updates?
The legislature updates that.
Of the state?
Yes.
Or of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yep. And so they will occasionally come out and Leslie's involved with the Pennsylvania Planning Association. They'll reach out and say, or someone will reach out and say, we have some issues, the municipal legal do that. Like, we're having issues in our community with this specific matter. Can we look at getting an amendment made? And just because you have to follow the MPC and your hands do get tied, there's still long-range planning that can be undertaken by the planning commission for the township, right? You can still sit and say, I, you have to have, you know, a plan for sort of every use within your municipality unless you share uses, which we share. But you can say, I don't really want them all over on this certain section of the township. We'd rather see more rural development here. Or we'd rather encourage more, better use of the land over here. So that you still have some flexibility. It's just that, again, it's that piece of Pennsylvania's pro-land-use and there's 2,500 municipalities in the state. So to make it a little bit easier on people that come in to try to do business in Pennsylvania, they give you a framework with which you have to work. So the timeframes are the same here as they are in State College Borough, Harris Township, College Township. So people that do business in this area know what to expect.
In general, is that pretty well received, pretty well liked? That, the sort of our, our, our version of that code that we're, that we have to deal with?
It, I mean.
Compared to like other states, compared to other, you know, how?
I think it's, I think that's a good question for Alex, perhaps to answer, because we've seen with some out-of-town developers, it is not always well-received.
That's correct. And I want to clarify first, Brian, are you talking about the MPC or our zoning and saldo ordinances?
I'm talking about the whole MPC.
Okay.
But the, the, you know, the, the big guiding.
Because if we want to change something in our zoning and our saldo, that would start here.
Yeah.
And then that recommendation would go to the board.
Okay.
Yeah. So if there is something that you are, if, if you're seeing a lot of waivers about the same thing, that might be a conversation that you have, maybe that's a, that's a work task to have a, have a, have staff actually go and, and do some research to see if it's worth changing, you know? And, and that would go through another process, which we will talk about in another, in another session. But I think if you are noticing things or something doesn't add up and you guys are in agreement of it, you can always ask staff to do more research, you don't have to take any formal motion. But you can make that part of your, your work task list too, for a future, for a future deep dive.
And also, when you're looking at plans, when they come before you, if you don't feel that you're ready to vote on something and if we, if we have time or we can ask for a time extension, you don't have to vote on something that eating, right? Developers live in the land of hurry up and get things done and government doesn't live in that land. So, I would always encourage folks that if you have more questions or you want more discussion on something, you absolutely can step back and take that and say, we, you know, we're really, would like to get more input on this specific topic. We're concerned about the traffic, that kind of thing.
Yeah. I know we also talked about solar, talking about the climate app. I mean, that's something we can incentivize in our code. So that's something to think about, too.
Yeah. There are ways to incentivize things also. So if there's something that you would like to, to try to facilitate in a better way, that's, again, that's, that's something staff can do research on and present to you.
How, how would you incentivize something? Like, with like local tax credits or something?
Well, I think, so there's a couple of ways to do that. For example, if you, you can incentivize by maybe, like, reducing the burden for parking requirements or for a buffer requirement or a setback requirement, depending on, depending on what.
Also, little trade-offs.
Yeah, little trade-offs.
That's what it means.
You can do, like, there are places that want to get more affordable housing, so they provide a density bonus. So if you give a percentage of affordable housing, they'll let you put more units in the market rate housing. So they, they trade off with open space or density bonuses. Some places where, we don't certainly control our water and sewer here, but some places where they control the water and sewer, they'll say, all right, we'll waive tap fees if you do something that we're looking forward for you to do. Usually it's affordable housing or other things.
Patent Crossing increased their residential units by offering more affordable housing.
Yeah. I was going to mention that, too.
So, as far as future mini-sessions for information, we just had a couple of ideas that we put in your agenda packet. Just, definitely a deep dive in the zoning districts, because I think that would be beneficial. We can get some guest speakers in here, too, so if there's any other subjects you would like. But the traffic impact studies were one, we talked about stormwater and then the sewer service area and the regional growth boundary. That's going to be applicable soon because the region is working on the red cap, so that should be coming out soon. But is there anything else that you would like more information on or that you can add to this list? And we can piece it in as we have time?
Is the master plan, like a public, is that, is that the public document that's on the, that's on line seven that we can see it?
So there's master plans that are associated with specific zoning districts. So the Plan Community has one, OBD2 has one, the PAD has one. I'm sure I'm missing something.
Well, this is Toth Trees.
So, so for Toth Trees, that's under the Plan Community. And the master plan that we're working off of was amended in 2018, I think. So, the sketch plan that they presented to you at the last meeting would amend that 2018 master plan? So if that's something you're interested in, I can, I can send it to you.
I mean, I'm, I'm interested in all, in like, the whole thing, like being able to see what the master plans are for, for all of these, for everything here.
Yep.
Kind of like, to understand what's.
Okay.
What we think is going on in, you know, everywhere. Because then you can get a better picture of, you know, pedestrian infrastructure, bicycling infrastructure, automobile infrastructure, what we think is like, sort of, how the city is going to grow, really.
So our Recreation Advisory Committee has a plan that has all the infrastructure in it that I can share with you.
Yeah, I would love to see all of that stuff.
Okay. And how does, like, the, the, when you mentioned cycling, I was thinking, there's a bike plan, too, right?
Yeah, the pedestrian bicycle path plan, yes.
And how does that fit with?
It's all in one document.
All in one document?
Yeah, and I can, we can share that with you.
Okay. Because I've seen like the bike plan, it's a separate thing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, the RAC puts that together, the Recreation Advisory Committee.
So there's a, there's a bike and.
Pedestrian path plan.
That's right.
Oh, but that's an advisory.
Yeah, they're advisory plan. Yep. Okay. But it gets, just like you guys, they're an advisory committee, but that plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors.
Correct, that plan was adopted by the board.
So then when someone comes in to try to develop something, we can reference those specific things that are within that plan as being adopted by the Patent Township Board of Supervisors.
And it helps to get grant funding.
Timeline associated with, or there is not much of a timeline, right? I mean, like, like we were talking about the Fox Hollow Road, there's, there's a plan there, but, but I was asking about timeframes and there wasn't really, there's no real timeframe.
About Fox Hollow?
Yeah, about.
The bike path.
Bike path.
Bike path, sorry.
That's going to connect up there. Yeah, I don't know that there's a concrete timeframe. I think a lot of this is dependent on, I know Susan Wheeler goes out, she gets a lot of grant funding. So like Cricklewood is coming to fruition now, they're going to full engineering. Supervisors picked a preferred alternate for that. And we're looking at Toth Trees Avenue again and perhaps a shared use path that would connect up to Cricklewood. But a lot of these things, you get them in a plan and then the idea is, as the opportunity arises, be it through development, through grant funding, through something else. Certainly, you know, all of us got ARPA money over the last couple of years from the federal government. You look at ways that you can then implement those plans. But this, you're setting forth kind of, this is the long-range plan for the township.
Thanks.
I know a lot of times I'm always like concerned about, like enough water because of the water table has drastically reduced in the last few years because of our drier stuff. Who do we rely on the information for that? And is, do they build in great big variables for that? Because if you're, if you're going to be looking at like a large commercial zoning thing that's going to happen over 10 years, or not zoning, but a development or a large subdivision that's going in or a couple of them, how do you make sure that there's going to be enough water, like 10 years down the road, when it comes to full fruition, that we're, we're not going to be in a pinch?
That's an excellent question. So that, so that would be through the Water Authority, as long as it's in the growth boundary and there's access to public water. So, the Water Authority has multiple locations where they're drawing water from. And they are under strict requirements from DEP to make sure that they're only drawing a certain percentage and letting the rest pass through. I'm not sure exactly where, because some of its wells, I don't know if they have any surface that they're drawing from. But they, they have to have that, that's reported through DEP.
So like there's always some in reserve?
There's, yeah. They're always, they're always ahead of the curve. Now, when you're talking about sewer capacity, in that same vein, there, we're actually, that's what that red cap is. It's to make sure that we have enough space in the, in the sewer capacity for what development could occur within the growth boundary. So, there's definitely, there's, DEP keeps close tabs on that and then we do at the regional level also, just to make sure there's capacity for both.
With sewer capacity, they have to submit, if they're in the regional growth boundary, a planning module exemption, which goes to DEP. UAJ signs off and certifies they have capacity to serve and they won't be in a kind of an overserved situation. The Water Authority, in the same vein, they look at something that's in the public water area and they have to sign off an intent to serve.
Right.
That they can take care of that and they have the capacity to serve. So those pieces can't go through, a plan can't be signed, recorded, and moved forward until all of those moving parts are sort of taken care of and signed off by the respective agencies.
Right.
And what if it's outside those boundaries? What if it's like?
Private well?
Yeah.
So, I don't know much about that. I know that when we review a, a plan, they put a proposed location, it has a radius and we make sure there's nothing in the radius. But they work with a driller to find out where the aquifer is, to know how deep to, to drill the well.
Because I know when Anvil Side was first installed, there were a lot of people, because there were like three to five homes depending, coming up out of each well. And over the first several years, they, they had a lot of issues with that and they had to, you know, go to war with the developer.
So a shared well?
So they had, like, yeah, they had, at that time, they had a few houses to a shared well. Now, since then, I think they're, they're all on the, because like in Gray's Woods, we, we were all on a single well.
Right.
At that time, too. And then, then the Water District came through.
Yeah, and I think the Water Authority has a little more leeway than the Sewer Authority in terms of if they want to extend their service area. The Sewer Authority, it's a regionally planned item and it goes through the six municipalities and through DEP. I think the Water Authority, you can run a water line a lot easier if you have the money to run the water line. That's usually the issue.
Oh, okay.
It's not as regulated as sewages.
Nicole, do you have anything to add about private wells? You're muted.
I don't have anything to add. Private wells are permitted by Centerridge Code, so if we need to get more information on that, we can talk with them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll add that to my list and I will get some more information. Because I'm not as familiar with what's going on with the State College Borough Water Authority, so let me get you more data.
And I know, Sharon, I go to the meetings every month and everything they review talks about the capacity.
Yeah.
I'm the liaison that I go and, and I know that comes up with everything they're looking at. So, you know, and he's great, Brian, in getting back to you with information like within five minutes, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I'll add that to my list. Okay. Any other questions?
This was really good, I really appreciate it.
It was 30,000-foot level, just so you could absorb what was going on and, because it, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces, so.
And everyone got a zoning map, too.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, Alex printed these, so you guys haven't updated one of those?
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I actually went and bought one of these. I went to the Centerridge.
You did?
Because I wanted to have it. Because I wanted to have it on my bulletin board, so I could.
Oh, if you ever need anything, just ask us.
Thank you, I didn't even think about it.
Okay, so are we okay to move on to Item 6, future work task, or do we need to give feedback on what we want next?
I think you gave me some feedback. If there's anything else that you have feedback on?
Anyone on Planning Commission that would like anything else that we didn't discuss to get some more information about? Okay. So that takes us now to Planning Commission work task. So we're still in the process of getting a list together of some future work tasks, and I guess we will have further discussion in the July Planning Commission meeting.
That there's a memo attached to your agenda packet?
Yeah.
And again, if there's anything that you would like to add per our conversation, the last task number five, you're welcome to, you're welcome to bring that up at the next meeting, but it's a lot of information, and after tonight's meeting, I know that was a lot of discussion, so if you want to just absorb this, we can chat about this next time.
But I think also, like, from my lens, I think getting the updates on the information kind of work, side by side with future work tasks, because once we get the information, that sometimes drives some of the discussions we have, like if there's, you know, certain things that are coming up constantly that developers want a waiver on, well, then that drives our work tasks. So I think it kind of works parallel from my vantage point.
Right. So the stuff that's in the memo that I presented is stuff that's either been in the works or it's stuff that came out of the general code review that we need to work on. So if you're okay with, if there's anything you want to add right now, we can do that, but I think we're going to send you a survey monkey so you can prioritize these, if that's okay with you guys.
There was, we talked about the, when there was the issue with the storage facility, climate-controlled store, about the number of items that was listed as part of the commercial zone, I guess, and we talked about, is there a way for us to limit that number? Because some of the items that were on there, I don't know if you remember.
Permitted in C1 district? What is permitted in C1?
Yeah, and I know there were questions about some of the things that were on there that seemed like they didn't belong there. So it was like revisiting the list, that long list.
Okay.
Yeah, I do remember that.
Yeah.
It is a long list.
Yeah.
And then C2 district says.
Some of them just seem bizarre.
And C2 says, everything in C1 plus all of these.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, we can add that to that, to this memo.
Okay. So we'll be getting a email with a survey to prioritize before July. Okay. Anyone else, anything on 6, we can go to 7. Okay, 7 is a status report on pending items. 7A, attainable housing update, a solutions-based study for the Center County has been completed, no more information at this time. And then we just have an update from the Board of Supervisors and Patton Township. Geisinger Phase 3 Land Development Plan was conditionally voted on to approve with the parking waiver at the May 10th and 24th meeting. Is there any other business that we need to cover?
The only question I have is.
Sure.
When's the county going to get that housing thing out? Jim May gave a synopsis at the last Center Region Planning Commission, but.
Yes, yeah, so.
It's not up and available yet.
Yes. We, I've been watching the Center County's website, actually, I did check today, but they're supposed, they were supposed to release it, and I don't know that it's been released yet. That was as of Friday, so I'll keep you posted when it comes out, we can have further discussion on that. I think that's actually one of the work tasks in the memo that we just talked about.
Yep.
Is that an advisory thing, too?
So the county hired a consultant to do an assessment for the whole county with recommendations, and I think after some back-and-forth dialogue, they're trying to release the study, thinking that most of the opportunity to fix the problem is in the Center Region, so we're not sure how that's going to roll out yet.
Okay. Hearing no other business, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I motion that we adjourn.
Okay, can I have a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.